All right.
All right. And here's Matt Siegel. All right. Think we are all here. Mark, you with us?
I am.
Hello.
Hello.
All right. Ethan, you want to start off?
Absolutely. Welcome. This is the Town of Camden Planning Board Meeting of April 15. It's just a workshop. I want to just run around the room. And take a roll call. Looks like we have Chris present. Mark Segenthal present. Matt Siegel present.
Present.
Anita Brosha Scott present.
Present.
Alternates Andy Smith.
Present.
And Pat Chen.
Present.
And joining us is Mark Ratner from the Select Board. And Jeremy Martin, Development Director for the Town of Camden. Today is just a workshop. We're going to discuss some issues around. The idea of addressing climate change and also affordable housing. Before we get into anything official, let's go ahead and or unofficial, let's go ahead and ask if there are any non-agenda items for the public.
Yeah, nothing.
Hearing none. We will then proceed to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Workshop Discussion. I think Jeremy and I had a quick chat about this. I think today we're just looking forward to getting the idea of the process. I don't think we're going to get too deep into the nuts and bolts of it. But start maybe talking about how we want to determine what we want to address, how we want to address it is fine. And then what the process will be to ensure that we make progress going forward without taking taking too big a bite of the apple, so to speak. Jeremy has suggested that he can take over for a little bit to lead the discussion and I'm happy to yield the floor then to Jeremy.
All right. Maybe Anita, before before you say something, does someone have some television or something playing in the background? I was here.
Yeah, I'm watching the ball game. No, just kidding.
I've got my husband on the phone with our grandchildren in the other room. Should I tell him to cut it off? He said he was going to get off shortly. Let me just run over and.
Yeah, keep it down, Jeff.
Bite down.
All right. Yeah, so I like Ethan said, I think, you know, really, I think the focus that we need to like kind of start narrowing in on is is what are we really going to do? What are we going to try to address? Plan and how are we going to do it? I think everyone knows that we have, as discussed previously, we've got a bunch of chapters in the comp plan. We don't want to amend every single chapter. So the idea would be to make sure we look at each chapter, see if there we shouldn't. Depends on that chapter in a chapter on climate change and sea level rise. And we just need to get moving on that somehow. Hoping to have a little more assistance coming forward potentially. I will say that I sent around a checklist today, a flood resiliency checklist. I don't know if you've seen that. We have the opportunity and we're going to participate in the University of Maine Cooperative Extension program that we've I've been involved with for a little in a couple of years now called Collaborating Towards Climate Solutions, where they will do a two half two half day sessions on assisting municipalities and in assessing. You know, our risks, climate risks, flood risks, and which will be a great opportunity. And what I'm going to try to do is include the whole entire planning board as part of that process. So I think it'd be a good. You know, a good tool for us to use and focus on, especially since I, you know, I really liked Matt Siegel's email couple of weeks ago. And I have, I think, the little sheet that he had done. Or he included in his email. Worksheet for municipalities and how we should try to look at this. And I just, can I share my screen? Do you mind?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Go ahead, Anita.
I noticed very shortly before this meeting at about three o'clock, some emails came in from you with attachments. Are we supposed to have read those by this time? Because I.
No, Anita. I appreciate it. So no, certainly don't expect you to.
Okay.
Just part of the discussion. And I've been burying in a couple of couple of big things over the last couple of weeks trying to get done. And so I hope to get this stuff out to you prior, but.
Somehow I overlooked the agenda. I thought we were going to be talking about affordable housing. Are we talking about?
That's number two. That's that's after we have this discussion.
Okay.
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, that's going to take a fair amount of time overall. So I think that, you know, we're going to start that conversation after we do this. But just in line with the flood resiliency checklist and the collaborating toward climate solution with the University of Maine. You look at and like Matt suggested in his email, I mean, there's a lot that we could dive into. And really, where do we? What are the real significant issues? And I think everyone can understand that the significant issues are the harbor and development around the harbor associated with sea level rise. Municipal infrastructure, private infrastructure, and then along the river, you know, due to floods. So. And certainly, we have a lot of other issues out further afield in Camden. You look at, you know, stream crossings, those kinds of things. I mean, we're seeing lots, you know, you go out Barstown Road, there's there's some significant flooding issues that we need to address, certainly exacerbated by those problems are exacerbated by intense rain events during the summer. And the town needs to, you know, holistically look everywhere when we look at climate change and sea level rise. But as a planning board. You know, what can we really start implementing or try to look at? And I think it's like Matt suggested is looking at the harbor and sea level rise and and try to tackle some of those things, tackle the flood insurance or the flood elevation issue in our flood ordinance. That will help. That'll also assist people with their, you know, flood insurance rates as time goes on. So there's a lot of things we need to look at. And that's what I would suggest is we try to, I think, in line with what Matt was suggesting is focus, try to be as focused as we can, because I think he identified 70 some odd areas that we could dive into, right, Matt? Something like that. And we really need to focus. So I think this is, I'm looking for this to be a discussion with you all. I certainly don't think we, you know, can make any decisions on, on, you know, a whole lot tonight, other than it's important to really start diving into the comp plan and this other stuff. I don't know if you all have. I can't do this all by myself and looking for some assistance. As you all know, we are going to be looking to MCD, which is the Midcoast Economic Development District for some assistance and some of this work, I think. To kind of, you know, really just be focused on projects, projects, which will be a good, good thing for us. Hello, anyone have any comments on it? Again, I haven't had a whole lot of time this week and last to spend on this. I wanted to certainly, you know, we need to really start having into it. But it's really from my perspective, using this checklist that Matt had set around, I think, is really critical. That's what it's about. It's about the built environment. It's about stormwater and buildings and our infrastructure. And we need to identify those issues and those concerns in our comp plan and in a chapter on it, and then provide recommendations and goals that the town can move forward with, which would then facilitate ordinance amendments and capital investment potentially. You know, we certainly, I think Anita talked about at some point, talked about the water, you know, the redo of the waterfront, the harbor and the landing. And you know, we had these plans done and we didn't even there's scant references. They didn't even take climate change and sea level rise into account. So we need to really be, you know, forward thinking in all of their, whether it be municipal projects or public projects and how people should be planning and how we should recommend they plan for the future. That's what our comp plan does. So anyone has any comments or thoughts on all of this? I know, you know, Matt did send this around and I sent out that that guidance document on comp plans and sea level rise and climate change from the state a month or so ago. I don't know if you all have had a chance to dive into it. But this, in essence, kind of does address that, what Matt has sent around and hopefully you had its chance to look at it. If not, I'd recommend we all do that and then and then really try to have a good conversation about it. And if we want to, we had talked last time about, you know, should there be a small group that is working on some things? And that certainly appropriate and we can do that. But I want everyone to participate and everyone to provide some guidance and some thoughts on how to do this. Make sense? Any thoughts, comments?
Yeah, Jeremy, thank you. And thank you, Matt, again, for sending that around. I think it is really helpful. And I do think it presents the issues that we can address in bite sized pieces, which I think is really important. So I think, you know, if everybody hasn't had a chance to look at it, I strongly recommend that you do. And then I think, you know, we could start looking at prioritizing those issues that appear on that on that checklist sort of as of which ones we think are the top priority and and put them in an order that we think works, whether it's the order that they're already in, or if it's another order. And then work down down the list like that. If we try to do everything scattershot, we're going to be finding ourselves running into, running into, you know, just inefficiency and and getting bogged down. Has anybody, does anybody else have any comments on that particular checklist? Things that they think may be missing, or whether there are things that they think are priorities?
I will say, I think this is a really good, very succinct summary of what we really need to put in, you know, address in our complaint.
I agree.
It looks at everything for the most part. So I think it's really about, like Ethan said, prioritizing, putting these in order and let's focus on one of them and get through it and and then, you know, propose some recommendations for the comp plan and, you know, some ordinance amendments to go with it. And then just keep on plugging down through this list. And do it that way.
So Jeremy?
Yes.
Um, when we're talking, I know we had talked about priorities and I was also wondering in general. I know today we're going to be going over some things, not in detail, though, for the climate change right now. Um, I didn't know. I think we'd also talked about when a meeting, if we have a lot to review in a meeting, we wouldn't get to be looking at this data. Are we going to be doing some type of subgroup? And how would we or when are we, do we have like milestones on when we want to declare what our priorities are? So
Sure.
We'd have a framework to go forth in. And also, just I know we had some back and forth about communication on this topic in general. And what's our preferred method of communicating amongst the group? And, you know, if we have a subgroup, that could be a little different, but otherwise, would we just be reviewing what a subgroup talked about at our regular meetings or something else? Or is that something we're still ironing out?
I think that's a great, great point, Pat. I mean, I think that that may be, you know, preferred to do it that way, have a small little group, and I can be a part of that and assist through that process. Do that via Zoom if you'd like. You know, I can schedule those meetings and we can do that. And then we could, you know, again, like you say, have a have a, you know, nice laid out.
Yeah, Jeremy, may I just jump in?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, Pat, in essence, we are the planning board, so we get to determine those things. You know, and that, so that's really within our purview to decide. And that's what this discussion is about, is how we want to go forward. So right now it's open to suggestions, recommendations. And then as a as a board, we can make a decision. These are not formal binding decisions. But we can make decisions as far as how to best go forward and determine who is interested in what. So I think all the questions you raise are exactly the ones we need to address.
Do you think, and I think, you know, do you think Ethan, for next meeting, unless you want to try to go through this today, is like list out that priority so that we, you know, can can really sun what we what we think is should be the priority and then move forward from there.
Yeah, I mean, just this is a, for instance, about the challenges. You know, so for instance, we've discussed already and Anita brought it up and we all know that the harbor or the waterfront is a huge issue. It probably touches on two or three of these categories and is not is specifically identified in any of them that I can see or that I I haven't, I have to admit, I haven't, you know, poured over this with a fine toothed home. But I think we could agree that it falls under built environment, it falls under natural resources, it falls under local economy, and it falls under municipal services. So those are the types of challenges that we get into, you know, we have these categories, which are very nice and succinct, but then we have the waterfront, which is really the heart and soul of the town in a sense. As as an issue that that covers all four of these these categories. And so how we address something like that, whether we plug it in or people have a differing opinion that it actually fits squarely within infrastructure or something else, I'm open to hearing that. But I do think that's one thing that we should probably talk about right off the bat is is how we want to address something that sort of, you know, is overarching like that. Anybody have any input on that? Go ahead, Andy. You're muted.
Yeah, me now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I missed the climate change presentation. I went back and looked at the YouTube recording today with Lawrence's presentation. And so it's, you know, still fresh in my mind. And kind of made a few notes as I went through that. You know, I liked Mark's comments about, you know, not being, you know, alarmist and looking at this thing through the lens of, you know, a reasonable amount of water level rise. And I think the number in the presentation was 1.6 feet in by 2050. And that seemed like something that was real, you know, based on the data that they're seeing. And to stray outside of that might be, you know, a challenge within the community. But then, you know, there was talk on the call about zoning, ordinance amendments. And I thought, you know, that was kind of a priority. Because, as you say, you know, there are there are limited, you know, zones that are affected by this is the harbor business district, the coastal residential and the transitional harbor district, really the three main areas, right? So when you think about the the zoning ordinances and performance standards and standards and how they relate to water levels, you know, one work stream might be to to jump into that and say, okay, what should we be doing here about, you know, building heights and heights appears and that kind of thing? So I tended, I thought that was a priority for us because there'll be, you know, as Anita brought up, the town landing project and there are other projects going on in the harbor that will be, you know, immediately impacted by that. So.
And Andy, thank you. I take your point on that. I would just mention that I think anybody that's bordering on the Guntzuk or the rivers that comes down through town and also the stormwater runoff that we've been experiencing in certain neighborhoods is also would increase more, it would increase the zones that are affected. But I agree with you on focusing on affected zones.
Right. And another thing, thought that came up in my mind, I was involved in a project down in Camden Harbor. And, you know, the electrical panels had to be above the, I think it was the 100 year flood elevation. So I know that the electrical code is something that I think is controlled at the state level. But it just kind of raised a question in my head of, okay, if you're thinking about that, how does that play into it? You know, so.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it that that 100 year flood level is critical. And you know, I was asked by the Select Board to look at the flood ordinance and see if we can make that a little more robust in terms of, you know, understanding that sea level is changing. Can we change? A lot of communities, not a lot, there are many communities that are changing the standard floodplain ordinance. So how floodplain ordinances work from a federal level is federal government created these requirements, they pass them down to the state, they realize the feds could never handle it, floodplain in every municipality across the country. Handed it down to the states, the states realized they could never handle it in any every municipality in their state. So then they handed it to every municipality in the country as the responsibility to administer what in essence is a national flood insurance ordinance, flood flood ordinance. And within that, there's a model, the model ordinance is one foot above base flood elevation. So if you're down in Camden, I don't know off the top of my head, I think 0.1 feet or in around there, maybe is the is the 100 year flood level. And if that and again, Lyman Morse, working in this, when they did their project, they had to every finished floor, the first finished floor has to be one foot above that base flood elevation. And you do this modeling that you suggested, the 1.6, if you're going to stay with that number or believe that that's true, that's going to change that 1.6. So you know, really, should we be looking communities on, you know, being thoughtful about this and progressive about how to handle this are changing that base flood elevation to two feet above that fin. So your finished floor is actually two feet above that. And that does a number of things for the the project, obviously makes the project sometimes more challenging, but it's going to last longer, hopefully. And so and there's insurance reduction rates, rates, your flood insurance go down considerably when you go above that that one foot above. So there's a lot of benefits to it. And within our flood ordinance, I was had it ready to go, the brand new model from the feds and from the state for for the town. Unfortunately, our zoning ordinance references the one foot piece. And so that's something we would need to start looking at. And that's probably the easiest pickoff in some of this is change that ordinance to do an ordinance to change that one foot to two feet in the zoning ordinance. That would probably be the easiest thing to do right off, but certainly floodplain development is challenging and the more that we can make it, you know, affordable for people, the rates are huge. I don't know if people live in the flood zone here, but I mean, here, I hear it all the time from from business owners and property owners in the flood zone that their rates are through the roof, tens of thousands of dollars a year for flood insurance. Tens of, you know, it's significant.
Thanks, Jeremy, for the explanation again on the flood insurance thing. That's not my, I definitely don't have that information at the forefront of my mind. I do want to address one thing that that Andy mentioned with the 1.6 number, you know, I don't know, I don't want to speak to the board. And I know it sounds like we have may have differing opinions. We know, I think we we from based on that that presentation, it's hard to argue that 1.6 isn't happening. I think that's the first thing. And then my personal perspective, normally I'm I'm an optimist. But the reality is that I think that hoping that we're going to keep things to 1.6 is extremely optimistic. And I'm not optimistic on that. And I think that what we talked about with the presentation from Lauren and what she expressed was that we might be better off if we're trying to do something. I mean, the next time this comp plan is going to be addressed, this is 2027. And we're already behind the eight ball. I'd rather be ahead of the eight ball than behind it. And my guess is that we should be, or my position is that we should be aiming for whatever, I can't remember the exact number, but I think it was like a 3.5 or 3.6 number.
The 3.9 by 2100, I think, yeah.
Oh. Okay, I'll have to take a look back at that. I thought it was still under the 50 year or by 2050.
Yeah, so.
But either way, either way, I think we need to be look, my personal position is that we should be looking at that. And I think that probably is something that we should settle and support before we go forward, because it's going to inform a lot about how we do, because Jeremy's fix of putting the floodplain one foot higher is a very simple and easy fix. And we could certainly do that immediately. And that would certainly put some stuff off, but it wouldn't address the 3.5.
Can I make a suggestion?
Just a second. I see Pat wants to jump in.
Oh, thanks, Ethan. Yeah, no, I would agree with you. I think we should move it above that 1.6 and be proactive and give us more breathing room. And yeah, so I that's all I just wanted to say. I would go with that definitely. That's what I thought.
Anybody else have any comments on that? Anita? You're muted.
I would agree with the higher what Pat suggested. And I would, I suppose that there are a number of details that would need to be adjusted in a comp plan and the rules regarding construction within that zone. Probably one of those being maximum height of building. The problem that that they ran into on the.
Right. Right. So I want to check in with everybody on this. Matt, how do you feel about that?
Be more specific, Ethan, and I will answer.
Okay. Discussing, based on the models that Lauren presented, there was the 1.6 number for sea level rise that we think, I think we all agreed was pretty much absolutely happening. And then there was sort of like the the three point, whatever.
3.9 to 8.8 was the range from.
But I think we were on the lower end of that, like the 3.9 as as more, if we were really wanting to address things, that we should be thinking about that number. That was sort of my suggestion. But again, I wanted your input.
Yeah, and I would again, reference back to some experts, we'd want to figure out what the the best case in terms of expert opinion is, if they come to us and say by 2025, it's going to be a 3.6 foot rise.
2025.
Well, again, again, that's, I'm just putting that out there as a reference. If you have experts who come in and say by 2025, you're going up 3.6 feet. We would take that into consideration and use that as a benchmark. So again, adjusting floodplain and height, Ethan, you and I went through this with Drew and Cabot, even at the current floodplain, which was 11.1 feet. And we were, we said, guys, don't you want to come two feet above that? And they're like, no. So again, to answer your question, Ethan, I believe that we should work on floodplain elevation and be get expert opinion and come again, as a planning board, decide if we're going to be 18 inches or two feet above that. And then at the same time, to Anita's point, that we would also address the change in height as part of. So that is.
So what so what information beyond Lawrence's presentation are you looking forward to get an expert opinion? I guess it would be my question.
Do you want to have Jeremy jump in first?
I'm still on this one issue. Jeremy, are you addressing this particular issue?
Yes.
Okay, I guess you can talk then.
All right, thank you. My thought would be if we can kind of focus on this framework, but then I'm going to have ask Pete Slavinsky. He, the expert in the state of Maine on this really is, he's a phenomenal guy. And he's actually assisting municipalities with that collaborating toward climate solutions, that two, two, two and a half day training. He's done this for York, he's done this for a couple municipalities around the state, and he's willing to, I think, come up to Camden and do a little spiel for us. And we can at least make that part of a planning board meeting or just have that be an open Zoom meeting that everyone can watch and let it be out there for the community might be a good idea. But I can get him to do that. And he's really, for the most part, the expert in the state of Maine. It's really phenomenal listening to him here, listening to talk about this issue.
Yeah, so let's get him in then for sure. And then we can, I guess, we'll revisit this, but I do want to just, since I've already started going around, I wanted to give Mark Seg. I wanted to give Mark Segal a chance to jump in.
Great, thank you, Ethan. One point I'd kind of like to clarify is, I know we've also talked about McGonacook Lake and McGonacook River. Well, what what we're really talking about here is sea level rise, which won't affect the floodplain. Did I lose you?
No, you said that, Mark, we got you.
All right. So what what I'm saying is that we're we're trying to address sea level rise here. And which is different than the floodplain on McGonacook River and McGonacook Lake.
I mean, I I do agree with you that they are different. I think that what we're trying to address are the impacts of climate change overall. And there are studies which which also indicate that that we're going to see more significant storm events and things like that as a result of climate change, which may then affect the 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 water levels and those things. And I know that they're controlled by dams, et cetera, so that does affect the the levels. And I certainly am not a, you know, I'm not a techie on all that either. But I do think floodplain is floodplain and is they are different from, as you said, sea level rise, which is, you know, based on tides and that sort of thing. But floodplain is another issue that I think is still impacted by climate change and is relevant to those districts as well. I see Matt has it stand up now.
No, again, I'd just be careful about in this initial attempt to change the comp plan and to change ordinances of going down rabbit holes. I mean, you really need to stay focused on a geographic region and specific changes to that region. Ethan, there's no way that we can take on, you know, the idea of writing a chapter for the whole to deal with 12 chapters of the comp plan is unrealistic. We don't have the expertise, there's just no way, and I've talked to numerous people since our last meeting, that we are not equipped. There are experts, again, you talk about Pete Slavinsky, I mean, I look forward to him coming in and getting his opinion on how much we could actually bite off and be successful in terms of our attempts to create a climate change chapter, no, but maybe start a chapter, start portions of a chapter that focus on the harbor and and focus on sea level rise, that we could probably undertake and accomplish. But even going off to Mark's point and going into the other floodplains, I'm going to cook river and going into this and damming. It's just, you're, it's a whole nother research paper. So just be be super careful as, I mean, each one of these is going to is, you know, Lauren was a perfect example. Jeremy, I don't know how long she spent on that research paper, but my guess is it's her senior thesis or something. You know, so again, and that just focused on the harbor and on sea level rise.
Yeah. I I would just like to comment and just kind of, I I think what Mark was trying to get at, and Mark just, maybe I'm I'm speaking out of turn here, but I think if we address something in the floodplain ordinance and we say that your finished floor elevation is going to be two feet above base flood elevation, that applies not only to the harbor area, that would apply to the McGonacook River and McGonacook Lake. And I think that's where Mark was, Mark was trying to go. Is that correct, Mark? I mean, I I think you're trying to, if we're really focused on on sea level or or the floodplain, we've really got to look at it the entire floodplain, every property that's in the floodplain is, I think, where you were going.
Well, I
I know you're a real, really, you've been a realtor in the past, and I'm sure you've dealt with floodplain properties. And you know, there are issues on the harbor and there are issues on the river and there are issues on the lake, and and we need to be thoughtful about, you know, how that impacts those property owners as well.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly take Matt's point, and Matt, thank you for being the voice of reason. I'm definitely aware that we don't want to bite, as I said, take too big a bite of the apple. But as as I was saying, my point was more towards what Jeremy is trying to phrase there, which I think is if we address floodplain and we're looking at it from a sea level rise thing, it is going to impact floodplain unless we're somehow able to parse it. It's going to affect the floodplain in the McGonacook and watershed region as well. And I understand that those are issues that maybe we can't address, and that that's why we need to prioritize. And what I'm going to suggest is that we not spend too much time on this discussion today, but I do want to still get people who have their hands up, and I see that Mark and Anita both raise their hands, and also get Crisso's input. And then we can start to, we can all take a look at this and come back next meeting with our own ideas of priorities on this list, and then we'll start from there. I think that's the best process, but I'm still again, open to other suggestions. So Mark, I'm going to let you finish on your point, and then I'm going to go to Anita, then I'm going to bring Chris so.
My understanding that the comprehensive plan is a work plan that is developed for us to focus on for the next 10 years. We're not, we don't use the comp plan to solve all these problems. The comp plan is is to address concerns and directions we want to move in the future. And and the zoning ordinance is the document that used to address immediately and currently.
Yeah, I think you're right.
That's, that's where you concerned me a little bit there, Jeremy, is that you're you seem to see we're we're writing the comp plan and then the zoning ordinance time to address those issues.
Well, I think I think the idea, and I don't want to speak to Jeremy, but I think again, we're the board that's addressing this. Jeremy is is here as a steward to help guide us and and we can work with with his suggestions. But my my feeling on that is that we are adjusting the comp plan so that we can also draft ordinances which are consistent with that comp plan. Because the comp plan is silent on sea level rise for the for the most part. And so, yeah, I think it is a two step process. Then we're looking at the comp plan as an overarching guide. And then there will be ordinances that that we want to put into place because we don't want to just, you know, you're right, we are looking forward in the comp plan. But then we do need to address these issues as soon as possible. Jeremy, I'll let you respond to Mark. I still want to get to Crisso and Anita.
I I mean, I totally get Mark's, Mark's point. I I I'm going to come down on where Ethan is a little bit on this is that your your comp plan is supposed to guide your zoning ordinance, right? So if the town decides we're going to, we should amend the zoning ordinance and create, change the building height, the finished floor elevation height in the zoning ordinance, and then we do it in the floodplain ordinance. And we suggest that while we're going through that public process, the reason we're doing this is to address floodplain issue or to address sea level rise and climate change. There's a potential for litigation if a municipality enacts zoning ordinance amendments that are not consistent with the comp plan or not identified in a comp plan. There's the potential for it, and and I I can't fathom that that would be the case. But your comp plan needs to support your zoning ordinance amendments. So when we are looking at like in the, when we have our next next discussion about housing and affordability, housing affordability and workforce housing, and all those issues are addressed all over the place in the comp plan. Much like Chip Lake zoning ordinance amendment that we just did, that you can find within that comp plan places where it says the planning board and the town should look to at the coastal residential district as three different distinct areas and try to apply different standards or different uses or allow different things in certain, certain parts of the coastal residential zone. So the comp plan kind of supports the zoning ordinance amendments that you propose. And that's how it's supposed to work. Could we, in essence, just develop ordinance amendments that we're going to change the finished floor elevation height and the building height tomorrow? We could probably do that. But you really want that rooted in your comp plan and the basis of it is in your comp. That's what you, that's, that's the way comp planning and zoning ordinance work together. You're right, that that is the, the comp plan is the guiding document for the next X number of years, and the zoning ordinance is how you get there. And it should, they can, are supposed to work together. And I think what we suggested a couple meetings ago was that we were hoping or the thought was, and I thought the board suggested this, was that we would try to tackle some of this all at the same time, so that we would bring forward a package of comp plan amendments that are looking at sea level rise and climate change. And at the same time, we're proposing ordinance amendments and climate change or zoning ordinance amendments that address that climate change issue that we've identified.
I agree, I agree with that, Jeremy. I think that was where the board was at at the time. I feel like an auctioneer here, but I'm going to keep going around. Mark, I want to give you a chance if you had anything to respond to Jeremy or myself.
Yeah, I I don't, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, all right. So then I have Anita, then I'm going to Crisso, and then I see Matt Segal. Oh, Matt's off the table now. Okay, good.
Thank you, Ethan. I want to go back to a comment that Jeremy made with regard to, or I'm not sure actually who it was, with regard to the cost of floodplain insurance. When we change our comp plan and re-identify a different level for coastal flooding or river flooding, I would assume that we are therefore identifying increased numbers of properties that will be impacted by the floodplain insurance increase, that those property owners will be experiencing. I just wanted to, I mean, I guess I can't really make a specific point except to say that this is likely. I would think that both the comp plan and the zoning ordinance change, my understanding is they both need to go before a public vote. So we could be doing a lot of well-informed and hard work to be as realistic as possible with regard to how we're preparing as a town. But there's a whole nother issue in getting that past the voters if they are seeing those very real economic impacts to their properties. And I just wanted to mention that as as another hurdle that we would be facing likely.
I appreciate that, Anita, I agree with you. We don't want to send a package to the voter that has anything in it that that it could be a kill strike for the whole package. And so we do need to remain balanced on that in in our approach. But my hope is that we can present this package and we can do enough education around it, that people will see this as something necessary and also beneficial to the long term growth. And I agree, we need to temper things. Crisso, I want to bring you in just to see if you have anything on this. Are you still with us?
I I am still here. The couple thoughts that I have, going back to Matt's point, I think, you know, when we are at this stage where we're talking about amendments to the comprehensive plan, I think it would be, I don't want to say foolish, but I think it would be a mistake not to address all of the water level rises, because it's not just the lake, it's not just McGonacook that is currently impacted. I mean, we're seeing other ponds and lakes in town. For me notably, Hosmer, Hosmer Pond floods more regularly now than it ever used to. So when we're talking about amendments to the comprehensive plan, I think that that I think we're okay to say that we're adding amendments that address climate change and impacts on water level. And then the the follow up of that would be specific ordinances to different areas. And that's a much more expertise based level. But I don't think we should just focus on harbor sea level, I guess, is what is my thought.
Okay, thanks, Crisso. All right, so I'm trying to recall where I had Jeremy up, and then I saw Mark come in with this end up.
I I just want to maybe make a comment to what Ethan was saying. The, and maybe it provides a little clarification what Anita said too. So the hundred plane, we're never going to change that level, right? FEMA changes that, not us, right? That is what it is. And the two foot above that hundred year base flood elevation, or the one, what we currently have only comes into play on a property when they're doing, building brand new or they're building or doing something called a substantial improvement, which is defined in the in the flood management ordinance. And the floodplain management ordinance defines as a, as a substantial improvement, anything that is 50% costs 50% or more of of the of the market value of that property. So if you're doing a a renovation, a gut rehab, say of a camp and trying to renovate that, that's where that would come in, because you're doing, you know, the improvement costs 50, 50% more than than what the value of the property is likely. So that's when that that two foot or one foot above impacts people, Anita, I just think that's good for clarification and for Crisso too. Just, you know, that's the only time that that changes or applies, and we won't be changing what that hundred flood elevation is. That is established by the feds, it is what it is, we just had a flood flood study done. That is what it is. So it didn't take into account, you know, these projections of sea level rise.
But on that note also, I mean, I think that it's also, some of that is just at the whim of insurance companies. I mean, I I know from folks on the Jersey Shore and the Gulf Coast, regardless of any local state regulations, their flood insurance is just going up because of storms and whatnot, like regardless of any guidelines changes in that municipalities or states are making. So it's sort of well, that's they just do that.
I I will say, I will say, part of the that collaborating towards climate solutions program in the flood, in the floodplain checklist that they're going to offer the town is, part of it is the community rating system, and that is what governs what your rates in a community will be, your insurance rates will be. So that will be part of of that training that we have available to the town and to the planning board.
And that's really helpful, Jeremy. Again, I'm going to state that we're fortunate to have a, I'll call you a quasi expert on floodplain stuff, which is more than the rest of us probably have, but it's definitely beneficial. Mark, I saw you wanted to chime in again.
I did, but Jeremy said exactly what I wanted to say, and he said it much clearer than I would have been able to.
Well, that's a first. Okay.
Ethan, maybe we should adjourn at this point, because that way, I don't know.
I know, right there. I I'm all, I'm all about entertaining most of the adjourn. I'm afraid Anita would be unhappy because their housing is on the agenda. But I do think we almost reached the point where I think we can close this portion of the agenda item. And unless anybody has anything that they want to bring up specific to the issues that we've raised, I think what we want to do is, you know, we can, we can have disagreements. We are going to have disagreements. I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is a collaborative and inclusive process. So if we come in and one member says, we shouldn't be touching the McGonacook watershed, and another member says, we should be touching all, you know, we should be doing everything. You know, those are the the opinions and those are the discussions we need to have. And so I encourage everybody to look over the document that Matt sent and 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 start to start to get an idea of priorities. And just remember my caution that I think something like the harbor will will span several of those several, several of those categories. And Matt, did I see you raise your hand again?
Yeah, and I was just going to repeat that basically what you said. We set our priorities first before bringing in someone like Pete Slavinsky. We want to really have our ducks in a row. So if we are going to focus on harbor, we are going to focus on sea level rise. We bring in experts to inform us, to educate us, because as you mentioned, Ethan, none of us are experts in this. I have a brother in law who is an expert in this, and he's the one who's saying, you have to stay focused. You have to really find five items, one geographic area, and then focus on it. Because there's no way that you can tackle, it's such a broad range in terms of the issues. So just be careful.
And 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 the other thing that I will mention is that we have the benefit of the 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 two women who presented last time. And I think they were also willing to work with us as far as, you know, getting into a collaborative group discussion. And I'm And I'm also willing to entertain the idea of smaller groups focusing on certain smaller portions of this, if people are interested in that, or having an overarching group. So with that said, unless anybody has anything further, and I'm scanning for hands up on this particular issue. Go ahead.
Just one quick note, and I'm probably stating the obvious here, but I think as much education as we can offer the public about this topic, so they get informed and hopefully are supportive of whatever decisions we may come up with is a positive step also.
I agree, and I think that was one of Jeremy's comments was sort of snuck by, but we could make it a formal planning board meeting and work group like we're having right now, or we could just have an open public discussion that involves the planning board members and also invites all the public. But I think it would be nice to, my personal perspective on that would be, it would be nice to invite the public to join a planning board meeting if we have nothing else on the agenda. I don't know that we need to keep scheduling new meetings. I want to keep this under our purview and not turn this, that way we have a little bit more control over it. But I saw a note from Anita just in passing that went through on the chat feature asking people for their, I guess, sort of anecdotal experience with water levels around town, where flooding might have occurred, that sort of thing, or high level, high water levels, you know, all those things are certainly welcome. But we need to, we need to sort of keep this under, you know, in a controlled environment, I guess, is the way I feel about it. And inviting the public to a planning board meeting might not get all this attention that sort of a public forum on climate change would, but I think it might be the best way to approach this. And I do think inviting the public in, and then as Pat said, somehow educating the public back. I, you know, I don't want to plug a particular newspaper, but Zoom stoppage in the past, it's done a very good job, I think, sort of putting forth issues that face the town as described. And so inviting someone, you know, the press to our, to our forum and then, or to our meeting, specifically to mention that we're looking to get the word out to the public that we are now covering this issue and we're addressing it in earnest. And we welcome any input from the public would be a good way to start. Does anybody else have anything on the climate change issue? Okay, I'm going to close, I don't know, not close, but just move on from agenda item number one and move on to item number two, which I believe is affordable housing. Yeah, so we're on to item number five, which is possible zoning ordinance amendments on affordable housing. Again, this is an initial discussion. It may take some time, but I don't want to go too late tonight. I'm seeing that it's almost six o'clock. So we've spent about an hour. I definitely don't want to spend more than an hour on the next item. So I think, you know, if we can just again, get a starting point on this and see where we can go. There are the items on the agenda are an initial discussion, takeaway from the Zoom meeting, the Affordable Housing Seminar, and the next steps. So Jeremy, again, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, so just leading off there, there was a Vicky Duder held a housing forum recently and well-attended on the mid-coast. I mean, sixty-some-odd people were, I think, in attendance on it. I was part in it. Anita was there, I think. Town manager was there and lots of folks. Certainly, housing affordability and whether it be affordable housing, workforce housing, or you know, any housing for that matter, there's not much around anywhere in the mid-coast. And there's certain ways, not a lot of ways to address it, but one of the ways to address housing is to look in your zoning ordinance. And are there, are there things in your zoning ordinance that are limiting people from developing housing in your community? And I sent around earlier today, and I know not too early today, as Anita pointed out. So, but I did send something out and I, you know, a document put out by Local Housing Solutions, it's a nonprofit. I've done, grabbed some other information from the American Planning Association and an organization called Strong Towns, which is a pretty neat organization that assists municipalities with addressing smart growth. You know, all sorts of things, all sorts of issues. And this document was very, the one that I sent around today, I think really summarized issues. And I also attached a document that was part of in the state's land use planning guidance documents from Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, which is now the entity that handles planning assistance to municipalities. Affordable housing and regulatory incentives. And just quickly, I can just briefly talk about it. I'd have to go into my email and pull it up unless someone else can do that while I'm doing this. Matt Siegel. The affordable housing regulatory incentive thing, it describes, you know, that there are a number of regulatory incentives that communities can use to encourage construction of affordable housing. I'm going to admit Chris O'Rio again, he must have got bounced out. We, for the most part, do a lot of what they suggest in here. Allow manufactured housing in areas of the community where single-family dwellings are permitted. We allow that currently. You'll see certain areas of Pearl Street that have manufactured homes. There's mobile homes on Pearl Street at, you know, one end. We allow that. So we do do that. It says allow the creation of accessory apartments in, in or attached to single-family dwellings. We allow them not only in and attached, but detached from the single-family dwelling. And we've liberalized some of those accessory dwelling unit requirements last, last year, and the town overwhelmingly supported them. And we're seeing a number of units going in this last year that are taking advantage of that. Not a lot, but we have seen a number of them. And then you know, they also suggest, all right, that's not the one I was looking for, but that's a good one. I was looking for the one that I sent today, Matt. There were affordable housing regulatory incentives and then a zoning changes to allow for higher residential density. But and so, yeah, getting to that one is to address your density issues. We in right now have a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size in the Village District. And then we also, I think people don't understand too that our Village District doesn't, I think people think it's more restrictive than it is, to be honest with you. The Village District allows, you can have a two-family home in the Village District. You can have multi-family dwelling home in the Village District. I mean, this is predominantly our single-family zone. But it's all about lot size. So single-family home needs 10,000 square feet. When you add an accessory apartment, you don't need any more additional land. If you want to add a second dwelling unit to that, you need 7,500 square feet per dwelling unit. So we go from a two, from a single-family home needs 10,000. Then we go to 15,000 if you wanted to have two units in that home. Most, a lot of communities just don't allow the multi-family, regardless of your lot size in your downtown kind of urban, single-family neighborhoods. We allow it. We're pretty permissive, to be honest with you. Our lot size may be high. And that may be something that we should look at. That is one things that, one things that people look at. I will say, in getting to this other document, I'll stick with this one, but density bonuses for creating affordable housing, that's something that some communities do. And create areas in the community where relatively small lot sizes and fringes are allowed. I mean, that, I think that's really, again, about density and frontage requirements. And then there's a provision that they talk about requiring certain percentage of housing units in new developments to be affordable.
Is someone sharing their calendar there?
I think that was Matt.
Man, he's a busy person. That's that's way worse than mine.
Just trying to find Jeremy's stuff. You got my calendar, Ted.
All right. So just getting back to something else. So we do do a number of those things. And this other, other article I sent to you, which is worth to read because it's a simple read, and I think it lays it out pretty clearly. An approach is to use zoning to address housing. And how do you do that? You allow single-family homes on smaller lot sizes. Create that opportunity for people to subdivide existing large lots and to build additional housing. We are seeing people do that. Can we reduce our lots further, our minimum lot size requirements further? That's something the town probably should look at. I would recommend looking at it. You know, in order to do that, we'd really need to really do a full kind of GIS assessment, mapping assessment of what our lot sizes are, what our setbacks are. Because when you, when you start addressing lot sizes and reducing them or allowing additional dwelling units on that property, because you reduce those lot sizes, you want to make sure too that your setback requirements that apply in all of these zones afford actually someone to do something with that lot, right? You don't want to leave those setbacks. So we really need to be able to look at holistically at what the community is really like, how the existing development is. Are people comfortable with that existing development? Do they want change? Do they want to add more dwelling units? I mean, these are the big conversations that need to happen about housing.
Can I just jump in real quick, Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
We have, we have, you know, Mark Ratner here, and he's here all the time, and appreciate you sitting through our our shenanigans. But I'm curious what the select board, I know that obviously there's a Tannery Park proposal, and that's been tabled or at least put back a little bit, but what areas are the select board looking at for these, these types of issues? Because in a sense, I'm trying to make sure we're not putting the cart before the horse. There are certainly things we can do from a planning perspective, and as Jeremy had already mentioned, you know, affordable housing development, those sorts of things are in the comp plan already, and we can address those things. But I'm curious if the select board is looking at other properties in town for cluster-type development or, you know, that sort of thing. Or if we really are limited to these, these other issues where we're talking about limiting, you know, make lot sizes smaller and reduce some setbacks because you know, my, my perspective on that is those can be helpful, but I don't think that we're going to see some great sea change where we would, if we had a lot in town that, you know, take the Tannery Park out of the picture for now. So I know that that's still up for discussion. But if we had a lot where somebody was putting in 50 units of affordable housing, in a small town like Camden, that's actually a very significant, you know, impact. Whereas what we're talking about might be four houses over the course of five years, people build closer to the lot, you know, make a subdivision that's slightly smaller, that sort of thing, could affect, you know, some some subdivisions that are already in the works, out a little further out and that sort of thing, but it's not going to have a huge impact on high-density housing. So Mark, you have anything on that?
It's, yeah, I mean, the two places we've been discussing the most in the last month is, of course, are Tannery and Sagamore Farms. Because those are basically, Jeremy, when he came in, looked at all of the property that the town owned. And there is very little that's, that's buildable. You know, those are the two places where we have the place. There is a lot of open unbuilt land in Camden, but it's all privately owned. And there's not much indication that any of it is open to being developed. So we're sort of in a problem. Unlike Rockport, unlike other towns around us, we just don't have any open property that, you know, people look towards developing, and that's sort of a problem. So maybe, you know, a few houses here, a few houses there makes sense because there's not much else we can do. Allison brought up the other night in the select board meeting, talking about the Tannery and the frustrating thing that, you know, the changes mean that we're going to have to delay the process there. Is that as much as we all would love to have more affordable housing put in, we may not be able to because we just don't have the property. And that's, you know, I don't think there's a single person on the board or here or anywhere that doesn't say, boy, I wish we had more affordable housing. But we can't remake Camden to our own desires without the reality of going, where are we going to put it? They're just, you know, Jeremy can tell you, he went through everything as soon as he got here. And there's just no place for the town to build. So it's, you know, we either have to make it easier for private people to, to do it again if they want to, or we're not going to have more housing.
Yeah, and I will jump in. I don't want to, you know, soapbox stuff, but I do feel like, and it's in my neighborhood, but the coalcore property, the old Tibbetts Lot and everything was, I think, an opportunity. And there is still one lot available there in the middle of the other two. The other two are sold, but the middle lot is still available. I know it's not town-owned. But if it is a priority, it's certainly something available for purchase and something could be done there, but it would require rezoning because it is industrially zoned. I haven't seen anything yet coming from the projects that are going in on that coalcore lot that are going to lead to great job creation. And, you know, all this other stuff that's been touted is to great benefit. And my personal perspective is rather than industrial properties, what we need is affordable housing. So I think we missed the boat on that a little bit, but there is still one lot there. But I don't know, I hear you, Mark. I don't know where there are other lots available. And go ahead, you can jump back in.
Well, one thing I'll say is one thing that I've been concentrating on, and now we have, and Matt knows this, we've got, we're making full steam ahead now on affordable high-fiber internet for every residence in town. Because as you look at the future, you know, the future is, is basically wireless internet in terms of people working from home, businesses and stuff, that the transition for us to have, I think that the wish that we have some industrial kind of thing come in, we're not the first choice for anybody looking to build any physical businesses because we don't have the people, we don't have the property, we don't have the transportation to make it viable. But in terms of, you know, looking towards the future, what we're doing in Matt's, the vice chair or the, I don't know what his title is, or mid-coast internet is, could be a huge benefit to everybody, not just us, but the towns up and down the coast.
Yeah, I think that is important.
I think that's the future in terms of job growth. But that's, that's where the housing, you know, comes in. And it's, it's, it's a tough situation. We just don't physically have the town property that we can do much with.
And Jeremy?
Yeah, you know, I totally agree where Mark's coming from. One of the things that we need to look at in terms of even our property is it's, it's really, it's really something when you look at, you know, we've had three semitals that came in for Sagamore Farm. You know, one was to take, I think, Hedges Hall from the Point Lookout and bring it down and do a convention center there or conference center, if you will. And then there were two housing projects. One of the housing projects needs public sewer. They would like the town to assist in installing the public sewer. That's a, you know, pretty significant investment. Another entity wants to do a kind of a cooperative housing. Pretty neat idea, many units, certain percentage of them would be affordable. And that's at Sagamore Farm, and they've done a lot of work on it. The one dilemma that they have is, we have this provision in the RU1, the RU2, and the CR coastal residential, if you want to do a subdivision in those zones, you have to comply with the open space zoning requirements. And which gets to, in the RU1, gets to seven acres per unit is needed. Seven. So you know, I don't know when that was created, but there was certainly created, if you look at the, what the title, the reason behind the open space development section in the zoning ordinance. But at seven units an acre.
Is it seven acres a unit or seven units an acre?
Sorry, seven acres per unit.
That's insane.
It's insane. And so when you look
I don't have even seven acres. I have a quarter of an acre.
When you look at the cost of development, and so we can do all sorts of things that we want, but you know, when they talk about reducing lot sizes, it's really about reducing the cost of, part of it's about reducing the cost of the land. And so when you're talking that it's going to take seven acres to put one unit on it, that's significantly expensive.
How can that possibly be the case?
It is the case. It is
I mean, I love open I mean, I, I love open spaces, I, from the, from the ideal of it, right? But that seems just absolutely ludicrous.
It, it is ludicrous and. Two, and I think it goes down to three, three units an acre. Or three acres per unit. And it is, it is something that we need to look at. And if the town wants to entertain that other, other mid coast co or. Co-housing development that they, that submitted, we've got to address that issue. We also don't facilitate. You know, planned unit development or planned group developments very well in our zoning ordinance. That's a thing where you, you know, you focus the development into an area. And, and allow that, we don't really allow that, have provisions for those in our, in our zoning ordinance. So. There's a lot of things I think that we can do. Till we get people to develop, I don't know. But certainly having a, you know, a seven acre minimum on a dwelling unit or dwelling unit in the UR RU1. Is very restrictive and certainly there are places in town that I'm sure that it, there's a reason for it, right? The town decided voted on it, I don't know how long ago. But it's to maintain, the purpose is to maintain the rural, natural and scenic qualities of the town. And that, you know, I think everyone appreciates that. But in doing so. It really changes how development and subdivisions happen in those zones. And that's the area of town where we have land. And not that we have land, but people have land. They may not want to develop it right now, but it's out there in the RU1, RU2 and the CR.
Can I address, Mr. Chair? Can I just?
Sure, go ahead.
So Jeremy, I was looking through because I'd, I'd seen the, the note about that seven acres is RU1, is there any place in, in the. The ordinances that RU1 is broken down this, the same way that the coastal. The CR is broken down into different areas?
Or is that? It's not in a comp plan like.
I was looking, I was trying to see, maybe it was like the coastal region where Sagamore, we could, there's some small.
Well, it's a good, it's a good point. I was actually been looking at the zoning map for that reason. I think the RU1 and RU2 up on Howell Road and out Barnstown Road is very different than the RU1 that's up on Route 1. And so, you know, I, I think, I think looking at this is, is. These are the things that we can do to address housing, I think, or at least facilitate housing. I mean, people talk about, and it's fascinating, sitting on some of these forums that I've been sitting on and talking to people about it and they're like, and I follow all of this. I follow all what's happening in, in, in the legislature and the bills that are, that are moving forward. About affordable housing, for about mandating that municipalities do X, Y, and Z to facilitate affordable housing. Yet there's nothing happening to actually make the developments happen, right? I mean, there's tons of tax credits that are out there. But the cost of developing, the cost of land plus the cost of building a year ago is $300 a square foot. Now it's 350 to 375. A square foot. So think about what a thousand square foot home costs. That's probably pushing $400,000 now. Once you put it on a piece of land, that's not affordable. So. You know, we can do all we want in our zoning ordinance to try to facilitate things. Will it affect change in the market? I don't know, but I think we need to facilitate it and I think we need to put it out there. That what we're doing is trying to incentivize and from a zoning perspective, affordable housing. And that's what we can do. We can make it happen, obviously, Ethan, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I guess I feel like high density. You know, cluster housing is much, is much more efficient than.
More cost effective, for sure.
Yeah, than, than trying to do, even if you have to do sewer or something like that, which, which is a long-term investment in infrastructure. But, but the idea of, you know, again, like I said, I'm not, I'm not fooling your ideas that like. We can lower, you know, reduce lot sizes and things like that and, and hopefully maybe get a little, but I think the, the net. Result of that is going to be pretty minimal in the grand scheme of things.
I think so too.
Yeah, and it would be great, but it would, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't make that a priority if we can focus on something that we can do to make other things work better. Where we're talking about getting 50 units somewhere. I see Anita's had her hand up for a little bit.
Thank you, Ethan. I don't, I can't say that I agree with you, Ethan, that it wouldn't make a difference to change zoning so that. Individual property owners can. Add accessory dwelling units or duplexes or whatever it is that we would want to permit on their property. In fact, the article that. Jeremy sent around did give an example of. The fact that Los Angeles granted, it's a big city, but we're just going to use that as an example, reduced barriers to accessory dwelling units. Construction. In 2016, they issued 117 permits and after the reduction of the, after the. Reduced barriers to ADU construction, they issued in 2019. 4,606 permits from 117 permits to 4,606 permits.
Okay, I hear you, Anita. I'm not going to cut you off, but, but I don't know that I said that it wouldn't help. I said that I think that the, on the scale. We're talking, we're, I was talking about reducing lot size. I wasn't speaking to, I think as Jeremy pointed out, we're pretty permissive on. Accessory dwellings and, and those, I mean, we already changed the accessory dwelling, you know, ordinance to make it easier. So I, I think that we, we are supportive of that.
Right. Can I mention a few other things? I think there are other issues that I would really like to address that. Probably are too many to list in this discussion, it sounds like. First of all, I wanted to mention that the RU1, I'm looking at a map now. This map.
Hold on, let me go find it, Anita.
Pardon?
I can go look for it. Hold on.
So RU1 is. Lots that are either surrounded, well, pretty much surrounded by Camden Hill State Park. On two to three sides. So they're the ones that ride tangent to the park. They're also along BoCare Avenue and up Start Road a bit. And along McGunta Cook Lake. The, the southwestern boundary as well as over. Over up the, up the Barnstown Road on either side. So. They're kind of mountain properties and they're, I guess, wanting to keep those more wooded. I think. If, if we can understand what was behind that rule of one per seven acres, I think the cluster housing concept. Changing that zoning to permit something like a cluster that has open space around it and other thoughts that would. Other changes that would permit more housing while still retaining open space. As was presumably the goal in those areas. That would be good. I'm also, when you say that there isn't. Really room for. Individuals to expand or add dwelling units. One of the things that I really think would be simple to change and that would really help. Is to permit a smaller road frontage. That would enable people to put driveways to properties and houses behind their lots. There are a lot of lots that are along roads and then the property goes and goes and goes behind the house. There's plenty of space there if people wanted to add a unit. That I don't think has a negative impact. I don't understand the negative impact that that would have.
Anita, maybe I can just comment on, on something there. I appreciate that. And, you know, when I actually came to Camden and I started diving into the zoning ordinance. And looked at frontage and how we defied frontage, we're very, very permissive on how we define frontage for people. Normally it's on a public road that you have to have or, or on a town approved subdivision. If you look at how we define frontage and what we allow for frontage. I can have an easement over someone's property as long as it's not more than 500 feet. Cause if it's 500 feet, then I have to go to the planning board. To ask for a private right of way, but I can come, I can go, if I have enough land out back, I could. Give someone road frontage by giving them an easement. And it's an deed, that's, that's road frontage. So we do have a very permissive. Road frontage requirement from my perspective, which I think we've actually have a lot of development that's developed to the rear of, of houses. Far more than most communities, I think. So I think that's, I think that's important to know. And the. I guess the accessory dwelling unit piece. We've been very permissive on that. We're also, and something you mentioned, maybe not today, Anita, was how do you look at? You know, alternative living situations in essence, I think something, maybe it was Santa Monica you sent around. We have this provision for homestays in our zoning ordinance, which is again, very permissive, I think, which isn't like many places. So we allow people to live together as a homestay. We also don't define what a family is. Most communities say it's five people that are unrelated. It's either people that are related by blood or marriage can live together as a single housekeeping family unit. Or it's five or more, five or fewer people that are unrelated by blood or marriage that are living together. We don't have that requirement in Camden. We just say people that are living together as a single family for the most part. So we, we in essence really allow a lot of things. That I think you're looking for and maybe if we can clarify them a little better. You know, because I can tell you when people call me about road frontage in our office about, hey, do I have enough road frontage to put another house out back? Or another lot? It's oftentimes very easy to get that road frontage than you, than you would think it is. And I also think it's important to realize when we say, if you look at the development requirements. It's very, it's possible in Camden to put two houses on a lot as long as you have the minimum lot size requirement. Because if the road frontage is for the lot and the dwelling and the acre. So we do do a lot in Camden. I think it's just. Trying to find these, these issues that are, you know, restricting or prohibiting. Some developments from hap- I, I do think we do a lot of opportunity as it currently.
Jeremy, can I ask a question? And this will show my, this will show my ignorance, of course, but. Say you have a lot in town and it's, it's basically just got a large barn on it. And you wanted to use that footprint and put it into four apartments. Is that something you can do? Is it, is it a zone thing based on multi-unit housing? Is it? Are multi-units, two units and above, are they, is there a distinction between two units and three units or four units?
Yep, so. So in the village extension. We allow single family dwellings and we allow two family dwellings. Right? And, and the, the single family needs 10,000 square feet and the two family needs 7,500. And if you go to like the village extension. We allow in the village extension, single family, two family and multifamily. Multifamily is three or more. We allow that in the, in the village district currently. You just have to have the minimum lot size requirement for multifamily is 7,500 square feet per dwelling unit. So.
Do the. And, and what is the, I mean, I know, I can understand sort of the, the underlying rationale, but what is your opinion of the rationale? Or the applicability of the rationale now for like, if you put, say you wanted to put it four units in an old barn. You might tear down the entire structure, but you have a good footprint and you're going to put in four rental units in a barn, like apartments. What is the rationale for having a, a, you know, a requirement for lot size for each unit? And what, what that number should be?
Yeah, I think, you know, these, these were traditionally, the way the town did it was the traditional way that municipalities. Dealt with zoning and dwelling units and density, which they were really more trying to protect the single family. You know, character in neighborhoods and really just kind of focused on that and then just kind of extrapolated it out from there. But certainly, I mean, I've even seen since, since I left the city of Bangor, they've really reduced the lot size, minimum lot size requirements in their urban area. Just in the last three years.
And that's with the aim towards multi, multifamily or multi?
It's, it's, it's with the.
Higher or?
Aim of multifamily as well as more single family homes.
Are we looking at doing that, Jeremy?
I, that, this is what I, this is what the conversation is about. I think, you know, we ought to look at it, talk about it and. And provide some directions and some, you know, some thought going forward. I will say I do take calls often from people that say, hey, can I add another unit out back? They think they can't. But oftentimes they can't. That happens a lot. So.
So that rule is actually not very clear to readers. I read the rule. I've been in town. A fairly long time and I read that rule and go, well, forget it. It requires. Whatever many feet that is that it requires in order to have frontage. So I, I don't.
Right, but your frontage is just, your frontage is just coming off of a deed of easement that you get from, from the abutting property owner or the property.
But that's, that phraseology needs to be changed to make it more clear to people because they're not even going to come to your office.
It's a good point. It's a good point. I will tell you that I've heard from many former planning board members. I'm not sure from any current ones and, and engineers and consultants. That say our private way definition and ordinance needs a lot of help and, and I have been asked. By multiple years and consultants that have helped take applicants through the process and they say this, this ordinance needs to be fixed. So. That's something we can work on for sure.
So you haven't done that yet, Jeremy? Come on, you've been asked over and over.
Since, since I have a number of thoughts and I don't want to monopolize, can I just send around? The bullet list that has been developing in my brain. For people to consider and for you to consider, Jeremy, and maybe that could be incorporated into the next discussion.
That sounds like a great plan forward, Anita. I'd like, I mean, this was the initial discussion and I don't want to. I, I don't want to exclude and I, I think you guys would appreciate this, most of you or some of you. If you read that document, I sent you that article from the Local Housing Solution. It talks about approach and occupancy considerations, a bunch of things, density. Occupancy, I think we've got that covered. Density we'll work on. And then it talks about visualizing density, but then there's also. Relationship with short-term rentals and home sharing regulations. And this is an emerging consideration, particularly in localities with seasonally driven real estate markets. That is us and you both, I, I think Ethan and Mark have both multiple times said that. Short-term rentals is part of this discussion or at least should be part of the discussion. And as a planner, I agree with you. And regardless of a registration ordinance that is moving forward. It needs to be part of the discussion and there's a little brief paragraph in this document. That speaks to the reason for it and I, it's something that we should, I, I think, be talking about. So, and that is moving forward.
I totally agree with that as well.
Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mark.
Couple of things that I want to point out is that, you know, we're talking about affordable housing. Versus density, you know, and there, there are two different issues, I think, and. Camden is, I mean, let's face it, Camden is not affordable housing. Land value is too high. The property taxes are too high. And it just does not equate to affordable housing. So if we wanted to increase density and workforce housing, that would be accessory apartments. And, you know, if, if we, you know, we did start working on that a little bit where accessory apartments. You know, we, we, we changed that around a little bit, Jeremy, right? And, and. And it's, the, in developing accessory apartments, they are not vacation rentals.
Correct.
So that creates the workforce housing, which I think is a positive move. But it, you know, as far as, as far as affordable housing, I mean.
I hear you.
How, how, how do you, how do you create that? Who wants to, who wants to sell their property for less money? Just to create affordable housing.
Yeah, I, I get it. I mean, your, your point's well taken. The land value in Camden is such that. Combine that with the cost of construction and the lack of labor. combine that with the cost of construction and the lack of labor. You know, it, 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 it's not affordable, but I think you're right. I mean, I, from my perspective, we can do things to facilitate affordable housing projects. And we can also do things to facilitate and, and try to address workforce housing. And having families or couples or single live in, work in, in, in Camden. And those are the things the accessory apartments do, accessory dwelling units do. And even I think dwelling or minimum lot size and help facilitate some of that. But I, I, I get what you're saying and I,
Yeah, I agree, I agree with everything Mark said. I see Andy had his hand up a couple of times. So Andy, I want to give you a chance to jump in.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of agree with Jeremy on, you know, the fact that all we can do really is create an environment where housing density can be increased, right? By, you know, making, you know, zoning amendments or whatever to do that. And, and we can't solve the financial side of this equation. You know, the town manager brought it up on the affordable housing webinar, this very issue and talked about the fact that, you know, the only way they're going to really solve this long-term versus short-term rental issue. And how to incentivize people to create long-term rentals is through, you know, tax incentives and other things. So, that's not something we can do, but we can certainly, I think, create an environment where density could be increased. But it's just, I, go ahead.
I just want to sort of follow up, up on what Andy's saying. I mean, and, and to what Mark's point, you know, there's, there's this big question in that, what is affordable? In terms of affordable housing is a very vague question. And if we can facilitate a developer coming in and putting, you know, are we going to see a developer or a builder coming in and putting in a multi-unit house that many people working minimum wage and can't, are going to be able to afford to live in Camden? Probably not. That's not, but if we can work with increasing lot size, cluster developments that make better use so that we can have smaller dwellings, more compact, they will be more affordable than a four-bedroom house on a two-acre lot. And it will be more appealing to some builders and developers. So, you know, there's affordable housing versus low-income housing. I mean, you know, there are all kinds of things. And we can also, you know, another factor is to look at whether the town wants to offer incentives to developers to do full, proper subsidized low-income housing. I mean, that's a whole nother conversation. But is, is something to consider.
Yeah, I agree with that. And so, and, and that's why I was bringing in, you know, Mark Rattner to, to talk about the, what the select board is doing. And, and it's interesting to me that I, I've heard, you know, I've been sitting on the planning board now for, what, three and a half years or so. And I haven't really heard a whole lot about Sagamore Farms. And nobody's come to us and said, you know, hey, you know, for this one proposal to go through, we really need some help with the zoning ordinance and maybe looking at addressing the open spaces issue or whatever. Anita made a good point about, you know, you're backed up against the mountains. There's a lot of open space out there. Open space in theory is a great, I, I mean, I wholly support it. But it seemed like the numbers that Jeremy was throwing out were just ridiculous when you're talking about, you know, putting in a development out there. If, again, I'm on the, I'm on the side where, you know, this may be just my own bias, but I feel like we're much more, we do much more benefit. And I'm willing to look at every aspect of this, of course. But if we can simply reduce the, the open space requirement for the type of development that, that Sagamore Farms is looking at. And, and all of a sudden have, you know, 10 new affordable housing units in one area in addition to other units that are going in. I assume it's not all affordable housing, but you know, just a portion of it. That is a huge win for the town. Whereas if we reduce lot sizes and this and that, and then again, over the course of five, 10 years, we get, you know, three or four more people building houses, which probably aren't affordable in the, in the grand scheme of things. Then I think that's really just sort of adding to the market. And maybe helping drive costs down just a wee, but it's not going to do the kind of, you know, put, put the workforce housing in place that we need. And that's, that's where I'm focused at. If you work in Camden, you should be able to afford to live in Camden. And right now, there are very few places that, I mean, that, that anybody who's working, you, you mean, take out, throw away the minimum wage job, minimum wage jobs, go to anybody who's making, you know, a decent living wage, say $30,000 a year. They can't afford to live here.
Right.
I, I will say, I do have the, the, the mid-coast co-housing entity did hire pretty, pretty neat planner consultant to work with them. And he's looked at our zoning ordinance and he's, he's got, developed some recommendations that he would, you know, recommend for, to facilitate this kind of project. So I'll, I'll, I'll gather some stuff together. Does everyone kind of, are we all in the same ballpark on what we should be looking at? I mean, I know, I hear you guys kind of, whether we should look at density or not. I mean, I think it's the whole package. Is, that's my perspective. And I'd like to try to focus some of this down for you guys for the next, next planning board meeting or next time we have this discussion.
Can I, can I, I, I will, I will get to that, Jeremy, but can I just let Mark jump in since I didn't pull his name into the conversation?
I, I just wanted to add one thing that you said, Ethan. You said that, you know, people that make a decent wage, $30,000 a year can't afford to live in Camden. It's not exclusive of us. They can't afford to live anywhere. They can't live in Boston. They can't live in New York. They can't, certainly can't live in San Francisco, Los Angeles.
Yeah, you just named off, you just named off, they can, they can, they can live in Warren. You just named off the, the top, you know, the top five most expensive cities in the United States. Camden should not be on that list.
Yeah, but even Warren's not easy these days.
And that we are that, that small, we are a unique town and, and one of the reasons people live here is because we are that unique town. We can't remake this town to be Waldenburg. You know, it's, it, we're sort of, we're sort of stuck in that Boston, New York, you know, kind of, we're that for, for Maine, unfortunately, you know. Portland, I think is-
I, I, I hear you. I, 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 I object to the analogy to, to the large cities. I hear you that we're seen as, as sort of an exclusive, you know, city. But I mean, at the same time, I, I was in Belfast and I lived in Belfast. And I moved down here. Everybody's like, oh, Camden, you know, hoi tyi, whatever. The people here in Camden are the same as they are in Belfast. You know, there are people that have, there are some higher value homes along the water. Yes, you know, than, than there are in Belfast. There are more of those homes here. There are some bigger houses here around the area. But in large, by and large, the same people who work, you know, who work and live in this town are the same as the people in Belfast. Sure, Belfast has to go up and they might have a little bit more of a crunchy, you know, you know, liberal vibe to them or that sort of thing. But I think it's pretty much the same. And, 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 and you're right, that people can't afford to live in Belfast. They can't afford to live in Rockland and they can't afford to live in Brockport. I get that part of it. But I don't think comparing us to the large cities like New York, Boston, LA, that sort of thing is, is constructed to the conversation where I really think what we should be looking at is, given what we are and what we have, we're not special on the coast. We're just another main town on the coast. And we should be looking to provide housing that's affordable to as many people as possible.
I, I agree with that. And those are just the cities that came up. The problem, and it go back to what I originally said in Camden, is we don't have any land to work with and the people that do own the land haven't been interested in opening it up. And I don't know what we can do about that, you know.
Well, I mean, I, I think we were, we were, Sagamore Farms is, is front and center. And, and, and I did not want to turn this into a Tannery Park discussion, but maybe that should be the priority of Tannery Park. You know, I, I'm not, I haven't been, been actively involved in that discussion or in that, you know, and, and, I mean, I, I only know what I read in the papers. That's the, the actual truth. I still read the newspaper. But I don't know more about those proposals. But maybe workshop housing, you know, sort of, you know, this maker space and stuff, which I think is a great idea. Maybe that shouldn't be the priority. Maybe the priority should be to get 50 units on that property, because 50 units will impact Camden. But that's something that's going to have to go through the select board and the, and the voters. What can we do to, if there's a project that's standing out there like Sagamore Farms is waiting for a zoning change, that's something we could do. And so for, as, as a, as a planning board, we should be looking at those things, things that we can do.
And, and maybe being taken in an aggressive stance to look at that before, you know, so that people won't have to put something and then wait for a zoning change. Maybe it's time to look at that now.
Well, I think that's, that's, that's the idea here. I mean, we are, we're, we're doing both. And then it has to be the comp plan. And then it has to be the zoning ordinance. And I agree, it's both.
But can I sort of say to Mark and to the, you know, that a component of this that, that would come from the select board is to discuss what potential incentives the town could offer to a property owner or a builder to who says maybe that they have, you know, if we're talking about reducing lot sizes for a, a four-unit multifamily property. You know, is there something that the town can do that would incentivize a builder, a property owner to do that? And offer some more affordable housing units on, not on the scale of the Tannery or Sagamore Farm, but to someone who owns a two or three acre or a smaller lot. You know, I mean, and there are requirements, and many municipalities have requirements that major developments have to have an affordable housing component. You know, I mean, this is all over Knox County. Try, you can't, and it's not simply affordable housing. There's just no housing in Knox County.
There's none. There's eight houses for sale in Camden right now, as I-
And if you want to try and rent something right now, you can't. There's nothing available.
It's, it's a very difficult situation.
I think I have some direction at Ethan from you guys.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we do. I think Anita wanted to send around some stuff that she had in her, in her brain that she's been biting her tongue on, which is great. We, we just, but feel free, Anita, to pass that stuff around. I think we do have some direction on, you know, the types of issues that we're looking at. I mean, I think there is a, the dichotomy. It doesn't mean we can't do both. But as Matt was cautioning on seat level or climate change, we do need to be focused on things that we can actually accomplish. And we could look at cluster and, and density. We could look at, you know, zoning changes, we can look at lot sizes, we can look at all these different things. Let's see where we can, you know, do the most quote unquote damage with, with the, with the, with the least amount of impact otherwise. I've seen a few hands up. I think Anita still got her hand up. Go ahead, Anita.
We use the term affordable housing and I know that, that's a tricky one to define. But I found it interesting in the article that Jeremy sent around, the, the concept of middle housing. And I think that's probably really what we're talking about is instead, instead of, you know, so much higher cost, higher value housing, we're looking for middle housing as well as affordable housing. The other thing is that if you create a, if you subdivide and sell off smaller lots, it's not really going to change things when your value of the real estate is really high. It's not going to change significantly. So I wonder, we have not discussed the issue that did come up in that affordable housing seminar about community land trust. Which is what one community did to create, to buy a piece of land, have it developed and for affordable housing. And that development is actually leasing the land and by the ownership retain, remaining and leased by the town or by this community land trust, then somehow it retains control of the affordability issue. So I, I think it might have been Mark who brought up last time that, or somebody who, that when, when you've got a high value and people own it, there, you can't tell them they have to put in affordable housing. They're going to do what the market demands. And that's, that's an issue that we face. And I don't think, lastly, I don't think we should flagellate ourselves for not having housing that's affordable. It's really been exacerbated by COVID-19. And it's, our community is not the only one that doesn't have housing. It's, it's our own fault for making it a very desirable place to live for a number of reasons. So don't flagellate ourselves for not having enough housing, but do move forward on, in ways that we can, as we've discussed.
Thank you, Anita. That's, that's really, really helpful. And I agree with you on that, that we, that we don't, as you say, flagellate ourselves. And that, that certainly wasn't my intent, but it wasn't, it was, you know, to emphasize the fact that there are, there are aspects where the town is unaffordable. And, and, you know, as Mark, to Mark's point, which was made much earlier, nobody's going to build a four-unit affordable housing complex that they, when they can build a single-family home and make a much, much greater profit off of. And, and that was Crystal's point as well. So there, there has to be some sort of incentive. And, and again, that's where it takes me back again. And I, sorry if I keep eating this from. But taking it back to what we can do to get those high, high-density developments going where we bring in actual, because it's much easier to say, if you're putting in 40 units, that you do 10 affordable housing units that are actually affordable. Than it is to, to, in my opinion. But again, I, I may be off base on that. I, I do want to sort of bring this back around, give everybody a chance if they want to say anything further. But I think we've got enough to go forward on. We're confused enough and we've broadened the scope enough that we can try to all pull it back together for the next time we discuss this. I don't have a direction exactly on where we're headed. But Jeremy, I think, has an idea of the types of issues that we need to, to, to corral. And I think that's probably the next step is going to be to corral all these issues and see where we can best put, make an impact.
Ethan?
Yeah.
Could I have a moment, please?
Sure.
As, as Anita pointed out, you know, I mean, the COVID is what's really created the situation we're in right now. And it is because this is a very desirable place to live. And this phenomenon is happening in every place that's very desirable. So, and what I have seen over history, people move to Camden because it's so special. They love it here. It's perfect. They spend the first winter. It's all exciting. They love the snow and they love the winter. The second winter, not so much. The third winter, they have to leave for a couple of months. The fourth winter, their house is for sale. So, you know, and that's, you, you laugh, but that happens over and over again. So, you, you know, I, I guess my point is in four years, we may have affordable housing.
Well, I mean, I, I hear you. I hear you, Mark. I, I'm going to push back on that just a little bit. I think affordable housing was an issue well before a year, year, three months ago in Camden. I believe that. And I know that it was in other communities up and down the mid-coast. Anybody who's tried to buy a house or, or find a place to rent in Camden has run into that, 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 that there was, I mean, to get, to get a one, a one-bedroom apartment under a thousand dollars is almost an impossibility in this town. And it's, it's true. You think you go up, you think, well, maybe Belfast is cheaper. I'll go up there. You look at Belfast, it's the same issue. So, and there's, you say, oh, well, maybe I could live in Lincolnville or Hope or somewhere that's not so, you know, on the, on the coast or whatever, Lincolnville Center. And you still see your prices are up there. So it, it is all up and down the mid-coast. I don't, I do agree a hundred percent that COVID has exacerbated this beyond, you know, what most of us would have expected. But I am pushing back on the idea that this is a COVID issue. This is not a COVID issue. This is a mid-coast Maine issue. And affordable housing issue, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, the lack of inventory is certainly COVID issue.
Oh, if you're talking about buying a house, but we're not, I mean, I mean, we're, 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 you know, I think when we're talking affordable housing, more often we're thinking about rental units that are affordable, because, you know, if you're, if you're in for the affordable, I mean, as Anita has said, discussing what affordable housing actually means. I saw that the board threw out some numbers, the select board threw out some numbers. And I'll be quoting them and I'll say that they are not accurate because I'm, I'm just guessing. But if I recall, there was like a number like a, you know, family or, or incomes between 45- But if I recall, there was like a number like a, you know, family or, or incomes between 45,000 and 60,000 or something like that was thrown out. That is not what most people consider low income. Um, for Camden, yeah, that might be, but that is not typically low income. But that might, if you could find a house or an apartment that a family, a family of three could rent, that it makes 45 to 65,000 dollars a year, um, you know, good luck. That's, that's where we're at right now. And we're not even talking about, you know, section eight housing or anything like that. So, and we do have some of that in town. So, you know, uh, we have to look at this in the, in the grand scheme, everything. And affordable maybe is another thing, you know, that's something maybe Jeremy can put on his item list. Like, let's define what we mean by affordable house. Um, what, what is that to us? Because, um, that's an important discussion that needs to be had. And I'm going to survey the room again for another show of hands. Anybody wants to jump in before we, uh, adjourn? I don't see anybody. That's great. Um, this is my favorite part. Pat, go ahead.
This is just a quick, um, admin question on the notes I had at the end of our last meeting was that we meet every first and third Thursday of the month. So I was a little confused. Um, is that how it always is? Because
Yeah.
So we wouldn't have another meeting until eight, uh, May 6th?
Correct.
Okay.
But if you've got a lot of time on your hands, we can definitely, you know, schedule another impromptu.
Okay.
I mean, I think I'll reach out to Pat maybe on the climate, um, stuff. We had chatted previously and, and
Yeah.
To Pat.
Yeah.
If something's going. And I'll start sharing some more information with you folks on, on housing. Thanks.
Okay. And now, Mr. Siegel, this is where your day in the, in the sun comes. You get to make a motion.
Ready for a motion.
Oh, yeah, I see Anita with her hand up.
Well, and, and Jeremy, we, uh, just before we adjourn, um, you had sent out an email about, uh, workshops, that there was a series of workshops.
Oh, right. Yep. I did.
And is that something that, um, again, it did look like they were coming up, uh, throughout the end of May and into, excuse me, end of April and into May.
April and into May, yeah. Anyone that wants to go to those, let me know ASAP.
Yep. I just think I wanted to mention that I think it would probably be helpful to get people up to speak in uniform.
Yeah.
Thank you to Ethan.
Anita?
I just wanted to mention something, uh, not on the topic of what we have been discussing, but on the topic of something that will be coming before us, I expect. Um, this year, Watershed School students have undertaken a, a type of class called, uh, the Climate Action and Leadership Lab. And they are looking at our town and addressing themselves to, uh, climate action, um, suggestions. So, uh, at some point, we're, we would be, they would be presenting something to us or we'd be interacting with them on the work that they're doing. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware, uh, that Watershed, once again, will be um, volunteering to contribute their work and knowledge to, uh, help our town.
Yeah, that's great. I, I actually relied significantly on their, on their former study on the sea level, the climate change issue when I was dealing with the, uh, climate morse application. Um, so of course they're welcome to present. Uh, Matt?
I, I would like to make a motion, uh, Mr. Chair, a motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
Second.
We got it. A motion and a second. All in favor of adjourning this meeting of the planning board is indicated by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
That looks unanimous. All right, everybody. Uh, thanks so much, everybody, for your time and your, um, investment in this. And, uh, we'll meet again in, on May 6th, Jeremy. That's what we look like we're doing.
That's what it looks like. Yep.
Yep. And in the interim, there'll be some information sharing going on.
And likely we'll have that, um, public hearing maybe on that other project.
Okay.
On, uh, the dentist's office.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, everybody.